Good evening. Today is Tuesday, January 14th, 2020, room 229 in the Veterans Memorial Building. This is the meeting for the planning board. Could I ask all of you to please stand and say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and protection.
All right. So, the first thing in our meeting is an informal discussion from the Millis Lions Club for a proposed two-sided LED sign.
And you have your little packets.
Good evening. How are you? Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity tonight to speak to you about the town sign and the Millis Lions Club. I did send over this packet you should have, this PowerPoint. In the essence of time, I will skip over the history of Lions and the town sign history, although just to briefly go over it, the Millis Lions Club did originally erect that sign back in 1984 in anticipation of the town centennial. And here we are. That was, you know, that was our 40th anniversary, and now we're celebrating our 75th in February. And so what we'd like to be able to do now is take that sign and bring it into the 21st century. And so our proposal would be, with the sign that's on this board, is something similar to what the new Medfield sign, I'm not sure if all of you have seen that sign, although that sign does all kinds of things that we don't necessarily need this sign to do. So, we'd like to sort of keep it simple. The current sign that we have right now out front, as you know, has some issues. It's been up for 40 years, almost 40 years, 35 years, and time has taken its toll on the sign. You know, the lucite has to constantly be replaced, the rails that slide in are constantly being replaced. We cannot get the new letters for them, they're aluminum letters, and for that size and style, they don't make them anymore. And it requires, one of the biggest issues is it requires manual change, which means that when something is happening in the town of an urgent matter, we have to go get the letters, trek out through the snow if it's a blizzard, shovel a path, shovel up the sign, put up the letters, hope we have enough letters to spell out what we want for both sides. And it's just, it's a time-consuming process and one that I think with today's technology we can replace. Right now, we can only do one message on each side. We typically keep them up for anywhere from seven to 14 days, depending upon what the message is and how timely it is. The town folks and businesses and some of the committees in town have been very good at getting us information in a relatively, you know, decent amount of time for us to get out and put all the information up, and then some things happen relatively quickly. And people ask and beg us if we can change the sign, and we may only have a day. We, again, limited a number of letters that we have that are still working. They've been soldered, they've been taped, they've been glued, painted, and they're nearing the end of their life. And most importantly, it's an outdated technology. We live, now live in a world where we all want instant information as soon as possible. And with this sign, it would afford us the opportunity to be able to change things almost instantaneously, as well as run several messages at once. The new sign would stay in the same housing. I know that the town is very, not strict, but all of us love that hometown feel, it's very sort of country, we don't want it to be Las Vegas, we understand that. We would keep it in the same housing that it sits in right now. So physically, what we would be doing is changing out the actual sign, putting in a sign that's an LED digital sign that allows for three to six lines of text, so a little bit more information than we're able to do now. We can put multiple messages that would be changing on a minute schedule, in other words, every 30 minutes, once an hour, never, we can change it to however many messages we might have on both sides. So literally, we can be running almost an unlimited amount of messaging. Or we can say, no, we're only going to run two messages on each side and rotate them out based on when they come in. It would be programmable off-site, which would make it easier, we wouldn't have to deal with weather issues. And one of the biggest things is that emergency management systems would have access to it, like police, fire, and the DPW, in the event that there were some catastrophic situation that happened in town. And I think that in this day and age with the things that are going on, we have to take that into account, and it's a very sad state of affairs that I have to say that, but it is conceivable that we could have an emergency shelter-in-place order, and wouldn't it be great if that sign were right there in the middle of town, so that people knew? It would also allow for some increased visibility for some of the smaller committees or events that are going on in town to be up on that board. Sometimes people forget, this would give people a little bit more lead time, but also it would give us the opportunity to change things right away. And we can throw it into a message if someone says, oh, this event's coming up next week, is there any way you can advertise this for us? Sure, we can just type it in and put it up. And the other thing always to take into consideration is the cost. Right now, we're using the old, regular incandescent lighting. We know that things have changed with the LED world, things are less expensive, and I think that it would be less expensive. And we are also looking into a solar option that would allow us to have energy that wouldn't really cost anybody anything. So, what that means for the town is currently, right now, my understanding is, is that all of the signs in town need to be backlit in white with black lettering or letters. And unfortunately, LED signs don't come that way. The closest we can get would be a complete solid black background with white lettering. We can't, I know that this particular picture shows in blue, but it would be white. And although we could do this full-blown LED high-def video thing, I personally think that it leads to distraction on the highway, on the road, and being that we're near a school, we definitely would not want that kind of thing. So I think just keeping it black and white with text only is the best way to go. And we would keep it within that same structure, so really, the only thing sort of changing is the letters. And, you know, we would continue to perform all the maintenance on it, pay if it needs to be fixed, it doesn't cost the town, it has not cost the town, other than the generous ability of the town to get us plug into you. It wouldn't cost anything to the town because we would maintain it like we have. And again, I think one of the major points is having EMS having access to it in the event that they need it to. And that's pretty much where we're at. As far as all the costs assumed on this, it would be the Millis Lions Club. Once we move from the, you know, if we get your approval on this, then we would move to the selectmen, and once we have the town's approval to go forward, we would then be investigating cost and putting, you know, putting up the sign. You know, the newer technologies are expected to last 30 years. And I think by then, everything will be holographic and, you know, we just have to think it and we'll know it. So, I do appreciate, you know, I appreciate your time, I can field whatever questions that you might have on this.
A couple of questions, or a question. So, I like the black and white thing, which is good, and your point of limited distraction, I think, is because I go through Needham, and they have a board that does all sorts of stuff and multi-color, and the one thing that I would ask is that, how bright are these things? Because the one over Needham is pretty bright, and...
Well, we wouldn't make it like Logan Airport landing light bright, but it would be...
You know, it, you know, the one in Needham is bright enough that, you know, it's actually really distracting.
At that transfer...
So, I don't know, yeah, the transfer station. So, I don't know if, one question I would ask is if you guys are going to get it, see if it's, you know, dimmable, or if we can get one that's not, you know, search light bright.
Right.
That would be the only thing. And this would be an exception to our normal backlit, you know, a sign that has lighting on it.
Right.
Which, you know, I think for the Lions Club and because it's a town thing, I think we could make that exception for the public benefit.
Thank you.
So, I mean, that would be my opinion.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, sorry. First of all, I would like to thank you and the Lions for what you do for the town constantly.
Thank you.
But things like this, bringing this for the benefit of the town, is wonderful. I do, as part of the sign regulations that we have for the downtown, I think the fact that you're going to be able to do this and maintain the frame structure, that's, you know, again, just something that's been part of the town now for 35 years, and you're retrofitting it into that, I think works into the whole idea that we have wooden signs. The fact that that would be the only LED sign in town shows that, yes, this is something of importance, it's not, you know, it's for the benefit of the town, not for the benefit of a business. So for that reason, I would be in favor of it. Yeah, I think it's, I think the coloring, the black with white, that's what we have out there now, so it's not like that's a huge distinction, that the wording itself is a big change from what we have. So, I'm all for it, I'm in favor of it, and again, I thank the Lions for, you know, being willing to now incur this cost for the benefit of the town.
Absolutely, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
And I totally agree 100% with both of the previous speakers. I'm, as anything you've ever done, you know, the Lions, there was thought given to this, and I totally appreciate the fact that you're going to keep it in the same structure, it keeps that same town feel that you've already, and you do maintain it, I let everybody know, they maintain it. That and the clock, aren't both of these, the sign and the clock, aren't they, not in memory of, but aren't they, isn't their name...
This sign was dedicated for Bob Raymond, because Bob has been, now he's been a Lion in our club 55 years. And we want to, part of the reason why we want to keep that structure, first and foremost, because all of the members of the Lions Club are just as committed to the preservation of the look and feel of our town as the boards are. You know, we love that hometown feel, that country feel, we like it. And to put something, like I said, that Las Vegas look with this big, you know, cement concrete structure with this big glowing sign, that's, we wouldn't want to do that. Even if we had the opportunity to do it, we still wouldn't do it. And we, as far as the clock goes, we're actually, now that there's that huge clock at the bank, we're contemplating maybe removing that clock and having it fixed, and then having it put in the park, at the library, behind the library. And that, the hard part about that is finding people who fix that clock, they don't make that style anymore. And we do have one of our members who's been very actively trying to track down someone who will be able to fix it for us.
And I think that most importantly, you know, we had a situation the Saturday that was with the transfer station being closed.
Right.
A tree across the road. And as you stated, this would be something that could have been, you know, if somebody would have seen it. You know, like you say, 10 people see it, 10 people are notified about something. So I think that that's, you know, allowing the town access to it, that's a great asset to us that we don't have. We have one sign board, where most towns have multiple sign boards. Mills has one, and it's broken right now. So if we have this one, I think that would just be another asset.
And that was one of the most important, actually, considerations when we were initially discussing this, it was if we're going to change this, we need to be able to incorporate the sort of, the key players of the town in the event that something were to happen. And it just happened, you know, the timing, obviously, of this tree in the road would have been, it would have been great if we had it, we could have said, you know, tree down across XYZ road, you know, seek an alternate route, that would have been, then been great. And hopefully, we never, ever, ever have to use it...
Right, for any...
For anything else, other than maybe a tree down.
I think it's great.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Josh.
So, really, the only question I had was in regards to one of our general regulations regarding advertising. So I know you'd mentioned advertising in general, maybe I misheard, but I'm assuming the sign would just be used for purposes of public direction, safety, town notices?
Right, I don't mean advertising like, you know, there's a sale at Rocky's, no. No, 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 no. This is just, these are things that we've always done. Things like Boy Scout, Girl Scout sign-ups, the sporting, you know, the Millis Youth Baseball, Softball, school registration for kindergarten, town meeting, voting, you know, remember to vote, kind of stuff, similar, what we've been doing. We're not going to change the kinds of information that go up on that sign just because we have a new technology. So we're going to maintain the integrity of the messages like we always have.
Great.
And if there's nothing going on, you know, then we just have Drive Safely, or whatever we used to put up, you know, Happy Fourth of July, or, you know.
Oh, it's wonderful. I think it's great that they're looking to update it, I actually live right across the street, so I see the sign quite frequently, and it'd be really nice to add, I think in a commercial and industrial district, which we're near because that's where we are right now, illumination can be played with a little bit pursuant to the bylaws, but keeping it in line with something...
Right. And it would be softly lit, it wouldn't be, again, it would not be that super bright, bright sign, you know, of Needham. We would just keep it enough so that you can see it, but not so, not so bright that it's going to blind you.
Right. I think the bylaws specifically speak to flashing, moving animations and things like that because they probably wanted to avoid what they have over in...
I'm sorry about that, I missed you.
I put a line, David, thank you for a presentation, I fully support.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, we could, I make a motion that we, we, oops, sorry, go ahead, Scott, any comments from the audience?
I'll be brief, Scott, usually for 11:00 Union, thank you to Lions Club, I think as long as I've been in town, grew up, they've been an icon. I think that sign, I look at it, everybody looks at it, sort of update it in a way and keep the character, I think, is great, bring it into the century that we need to. You know, I think there isn't a person in town that doesn't look at it, it has always had a lot of important messages, so to update it and have more messages, I think is great, so, and thank you for what your organization does for this town.
Thank you.
Including the upcoming Super Bowl breakfast, so, thank you.
February 2nd.
All right, I make a motion that we waive site plan approval.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, any other comment? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, passing unanimously.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I do invite you all to join the Lions.
That's an advertisement.
I have to put my plug in there. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
No, it's not an advertisement, it's a notification.
Notification, right, right. All right, next on the agenda is renewal of special permit modification of site plan public hearing for AT&amp;T Crown Castle.
Of course, go right ahead.
You can leave the stand.
You can keep it if you want.
Whoever's speaker, come on up.
I have, I have...
Do you need this?
If you don't need it, I'll take it, but if you need it, it's no problem.
Someone wants to sue you?
Okay. Thank you.
Have a great night.
County Millis Office of the Planning Board, notice of public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 40A, Section 11, Mouse General Law, the Planning Board, excuse me, Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 14th, 2020. At 7:40 PM in the Veterans Memorial Building, room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of Amory Zamba, Crown Castle, 3, am I reading it wrong? Oh, no, 3 Corporate Park Drive, Suite 101, Clifton Park, New York, 12065. Requesting a renewal of special permit and special permit modification under Section 12Q and Section 13N of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Millis for existing personal wireless communication facility located at 1073 Main Street, MAP 22, Parcel 10, Millis, Mass. Property owned by Malavik LLC. Couple of the applications and site plans are on file in the town office, in the office of the town clerk, and on the Planning Board's website. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right, if you could let us know who you are and let us know what you want to do, please.
Sure, my name is Tim Green. I'm here on behalf of Crown Castle, and what we would like to do is continue to be out there. Currently have a cell site out there, has a special permit, and periodically, those special permits tend to expire and need to be renewed. It's an active site with active tenants providing services to the Town of Millis, and we're just looking to have it renewed and continue on.
And on that one, the understanding is that basically the tower's not getting any taller, you're just adding extra stuff to the side of it?
Correct. Although I believe that, I don't know, is a modification...
No, it's just, just so people at home know, that's all.
Yes, trick me with that one, yes. It's exactly the same. If we wanted to make changes to it, we would come back to you.
Right.
To make those changes, similar to I, I was here last month for changes that needed to be done to the tower. This is just simply a procedural issue for the special permit itself.
Okay. And the other thing was, this was expired because you guys changed hands, the, I think that, didn't the company change hands, or the tower?
It would have run with it, but it expires because there's a, truthfully, there's a, the Town of Millis puts a expiration date on it, and it was missed.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
Same thing, I just wanted to, all right, and Melissa York, did you summon the gang out to take a look?
We did, yeah, we had somebody out there yesterday take a look, and everything was secure, there's wasn't anything notable...
Yeah.
When we were out there, so, the site looked good.
All right, good. All right, do we have to make motions on this?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Any comment from the board?
Nope.
Just checking. Any comment from the audience? All right, good. All right, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion's been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. I make a motion that we, we need to, yeah, okay, so I make, yeah, I make a motion that we renew the special permit for Crown Castle, 1073 Main Street Tower.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and now that it being 7:30, sorry, 7:50, we have a discussion from the Millis Softball League's Field Discussion. All right, Michael Rand. Good.
My name's Michael Rand, I'm the President of the Millis Trail Softball League. I'm actually here with the President of the Millis Youth Baseball League as well. So I've written a letter. It's my understanding that there's some funds set aside that the Planning Board is in control of, as well as the town, that's been allocated to field betterment. So, this, the letter I've written, would you like me to read it?
We asked if you could just do an executive summary on that, so you just kind of, it was, you extensively wanted to go through and do a bunch of work, if you could just kind of give us the synopsis of that.
So, in essence, we like three playable fields, and some repairs done to the backstops and the perimeter fence. So, in essence here, we feel that there's some safety issues with field number one shown on the plan, field number two, field three, and four. So, the way we see it here, there's, there's two options. The scope of work to repair field number one, two, and three with fencing would be $96,000, $96,300. Or, scope of work to repair fields number one, two, and four with fence would be $95,850.
Okay, so that, you know, my, my son plays baseball, and we've been down there before, and I know that they're in, you know, need of repair. When we did the, when the, we ended up getting funding, just so everyone at home knows, we get $25,000 for fields, and you're the first one to come to us for a request for, you know, to dig into it. I think one thing we'd like to do is, you know, even if we give you the whole thing right now, that's still going to leave you significantly short.
Sure.
So, and the other thing, I think we, and we should talk to the rest of the board about it, but, you know, you're the first one to come to us. I'd like to see, at least if there is another request from another sport, you know, does soccer want it, or do I cut at it? You know, to give you the whole piece of pie would be, I don't think it would be fair to the other. And now that we're having a public hearing, hopefully, if the other groups are interested, they might ask also, so...
You have a timeframe on that?
I don't have to give you a timeframe.
Okay.
Yeah, but that point's well taken, you know.
The reason why I ask is that we feel there's some safety issues that should be addressed prior to next season, so that the time to fix the fields would be just either in the wintertime, when it's frozen, or just prior to the grow season.
Right.
So, that's why we're here now.
No, I understand. The thing is, with the baseball field, they just did the one over in the high school, and I talked to the guys that put it in, so unless you soldered it, and even if you did solder it, it still wouldn't be playable right away. So, and the safety issues, you'd have to kind of run through those with me. Is the backstop going to fall over?
No, but someone's hand reaching for a ball under the, under the backstop at the stone field would certainly cut them.
Yeah, yeah.
Taking a ball off the infield fringe into the face, yeah.
No, no, I understand, it just, we just want to, it's, you know, there's not a Mack truck coming, but there are issues that we should address. Okay.
Anyone else in the... Sure. As I'm sure, you know, I'll say something. Mr. Chairman, I, I met with Michael and the President of the Little League and the Recreation Committee on this issue, and it was, I had made them aware that this funding was available. There are also other funding that's available through money that's come from the state that has not been used in several years, that would actually cover the rest of the, the, the rest of the cost. And that, that's controlled by the Board of Selectmen, we would go to the Board of Selectmen and ask for that, you know, that amount to help it. We did get some news, I believe, and you're on the Elementary School Building Committee, I believe that they're going to, where the old road was with the bus turnaround, they're going to put a fence, they're going to, you know, they've decided to fence that in, which is a big help, because that was part of my concern, and that we were talking about. The backstop at the girls' softball field that's in question, I believe, is that field one?
Field two.
Is it the, the second, all right, so whatever field is, I mean, if one looks at it, it is in total, completely, you know, disrepair. You know, high school, the high school JV team uses that as their home field, and at any time, I can't believe that, you know, I'm not, they may not be allowed to play there, is what I'm trying to say. I could see that happening, because it isn't so far, much disrepair. Right now, to keep the ball from rolling under it, we have snow fence, that's actually helping to keep the ball in play. And I believe that the, this would just remove the stone dust, you know, if there was one field that we, you know, honed in on right now, would be that field, would be the most important one. And I believe part of this plan, the Little League will get, you know, some work done on the Little League backstop, which is, again, that, that backstop's almost as worse, you know, in worse shape than the one we're talking about. And it was always the goal of, both myself as the DPW Director and the Recreation Director, that each year we'd try to pick off one by one. Town funds have paid for the 90-foot diamond, you know, for the dugouts that were put in there, the Recreation Department paid for the backstop there, and I believe they paid for another backstop at the senior softball field, and the DPW paid for one of them through, through different funds. But as time has gone on, you know, the, the funding has dried up, and we've had to stop. I think that you look at, I think the Recreation Department is also going to go to the CPC and ask for funding to do something with the leveling of the field. I think that's a big problem, because as we can see the field right now, you know, the L field, in between all these four diamonds, is completely gone.
No, I know.
It's, it's gone. And the reason for that is because we can't rotate the, the field from, you know, one year, one way, and long ways, and go from diamond to diamond, because there was a, there was a hump there. We also had to shut down, every year we shut down this stone dust field from, I'd say, July to... We also had to shut down, every year we shut down this stone dust field from, I'd say, July to, uh, late August. Because of, uh, being the stone dust, there's a, an active bee colony living underneath that ground. And, uh, we can spray, we can do whatever, we try to, you know, to keep them out, but we're not sure if there's tree, old, you know, dead tree stumps down there. And I think that this project would, would find that out and find out what would be. I mean, but they're gonna remove the stone dust and I believe it's gonna be a clay infield, a clay field that we, you know, uh, put in there. Um, so I, I am in favor of, I, I think that when, with, when the intent of the twenty-five thousand dollars was given, I, I, I believe it was, it was given to, to renovate or completely, and I think the wording is written in, in the decision to, um.
Upgrade, better, better upgrade.
Upgrade, a, 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 and not to be used for maintenance.
Right.
So I think that this would be, um.
A good fit.
This would definitely be a good fit for, I think, for the.
Yeah, can I ask you, since, well, I don't know if you would be able to answer, but, um, so on this right now, would you send this out to a, I mean, this is a decent amount of money, would you send it out for an additional bid?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it would have to be.
Yeah.
Alright.
This is only an example here, the great companies, so, I mean, this would be handed off to, for an RFP from, from Jim, I, I would assume.
I mean, we already, it, this is, these figures, I believe, Michael received with a, um, with prevailing wage rate, because that, and he built that in, so we know.
Right.
At least, you know, this is the base. And we would ask the, you know, the company that did the, um, baseball field over at the high school.
Right.
And there was, you know, there were other companies that would bid on it, but tried to get it. I mean, again, this has to go in front of the selectmen, because we have to, you know, secure the funding, the rest of the funding for this project.
And one of the questions I asked on that, so on the, like on the high school, when they did it, you, there'd be a, a, there's a lag time. You can't just jump right on it, because when they did the fields over there, they did it in the fall, and they said, you guys can't go on it until, you know, like six months. So you just, you guys had thought about that too?
Uh, not really, no.
Okay.
But, uh.
No, I'm just saying it's something you should think about, because when I saw the guys putting the sod down, I said, that's great, when can they play? And they said, you know, yeah, you have to wait. So it might be something, which the reason I say that is, it may be phased. You may need to phase the.
Sure. So this, this was part of the discussion with the, the contract that I met with several times. It's, it's work that he's done in other towns, uh, in the same time period, uh, and he's saying that it, it's, uh, it's, teams have been able to play on, on sod shortly after it's been put down, so depending on where it is and what type of traffic it's gonna see, I think that's, that's what, it has to be evaluated, so.
Anyone else?
No. Um, Mr. Chairman, with regards to other.
You're speaking, so they can hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. With regards to other possible, uh, field or team uses, is, um, I would propose that the planning board put something out, um, to the other teams. I, I would not wanna see, since we have this proposal, there is definitely a need for it. I would like to, for us to be proactive and put something else to, whether it was the Milis soccer or Milis, uh, you know, the flag football, although flag football uses all those fields, that's kind of the problem. The rec soccer uses it, the, the flag football uses it, so, and they don't really do anything with the field, so, um, but put something out there now and, and set a deadline that's saying, we're giving you, you know, three weeks, four weeks, six weeks, whatever is, feels appropriate. Um, so we're not just saying, yes, you're the first ones. We don't wanna just first come, first served, but not to just let this sit.
No, I mean, that's a good point, no. Um, yeah, I, I think I'll probably do it on a tighter timeframe. If time is of the essence, I don't have an issue with that. And it sounds like you guys had, you guys have also had, um, worked out some of the details with, uh, the, the selectmen, and I, I think the CPC personally.
Yeah, I think that, that, that's the recreation department, that, that they're gonna go, that, he just came to me today, yesterday about that, uh, that's something. But the, the, the funding, um, there was money left over from when the backstops were put up at the, at the major league, uh, at the major league, uh, senior softball field. There was still funding left over from that, and there was two other grants. They were allocated when we were going through the, the, the field project. There was a specific of fifty thousand dollars that was given to the town to hopefully help for that, uh, but it never passed town meeting. So the, the funding from the state is still there, and it's never been used. So I think with that fifty and this twenty-five, and I think, believe this twenty-something, we'd have to get all those figures through the, um, finance director, to see how much is actually there and available that should do this project. I mean, I guess I would be, if we're looking to, to put a feeler out there, um, whether we make the decision tonight or, or maybe at our next meeting, and if nobody comes
Yeah, no, I, I.
Forward, we could, we could.
No, I think that's fine. I think that, you know, like I said, well, just, my, you know, my son plays baseball, so I, you know, I've been there, I understand. You know, we call that home field advantage. Um, so, uh, um, you know, you just, just, just wanna be fair to, um, so I think, why don't we, well, I think what we'll do is, and this is my thought, we'll, uh, put out, um, put out something and say that, you know, the, uh, we've had a request from the Milis baseball and softball, uh, for the twenty-five thousand dollars that was allocated for fields and send it to soccer, like you said, soccer and whoever else.
Flag football.
And, um, you know, this will be improvement for the fields and, and see if anyone comes back.
Can you put a deadline on it, or?
No, we'll do it, we'll do it, we'll have it before our next meeting.
Okay.
So, and we'll be able to, uh, vote on it at our next meeting. So, Camille can put it out, um, we can put out something as soon as she can get it out.
Yeah, you'll have to, I don't know.
Yeah.
We'll have to work on that, 'cause I have no idea.
Yeah, I can get you information, at least for flag football and.
Yeah, I can do soccer.
Okay.
So we can do that.
Unfortunately, it's the same group of people, so I mean.
Yeah.
Well, I was just gonna say, you've got flag football, part of the board right here is right here.
Yeah, sure, go ahead, please.
Mike Leach, 253 Pleasant Street, president of, uh, baseball on the board at flag football. So, I understand, and it's a great idea, throw it out there, see what we get back, come back in a month. There is a time issue with this, because Sisto Two, the one backed up the Clyde Brown right now, is unplayable. We can't play our baseball games there right now because of the backstop. It just balls go flying everywhere, and there's lip issues which baseball will take care of. If we don't have a stone dust field or the instructional field, we're gonna have a tough time scheduling games for both baseball and softball. And we're, we're talking about it in that boards right now, because softball and baseball both use that stone dust in the other field. We won't have instructional, we won't have double A. We'll have to farm it off to Medway. As far as flag football, open up the flag football, they pay for the fields, so they put money back into the rec department. I'm not gonna speak on behalf of flag football. I don't know what soccer wants, but if it's betterment for them, it's gonna be, I don't know how much, you know, what they can do to make it better. It won't, it'll be a maintenance issue, whereas baseball and softball are looking to have a season. We need these fields, so, that's why there's a little rush. I'm not sure who you're gonna reach out to to have this conversation with, but.
Yes, yeah, so, um, no, that's fine. I mean, I, I understand, it's just, uh, you know, uh, I'm, I'm a supervisor, so when my subcontractor comes to me and says, you know what, I need this decision made. Right now, we're all gonna die. That makes me, that, that kinda pushes me off. So I, I get your point.
Okay.
Okay. Um, wish we'd heard about this in December, and then we, we would've had, we would've been voting on it today. Um, um, you know, I'm not, I, I don't know.
Is there history behind the twenty-five thousand dollars? I mean, so that was two years ago?
Yeah, when we went, when we, uh, when Glenn Allen, yeah, when Glenn Allen went through, and we put a, a request for, it was, um, no, no, I understand, I'm sorry. Um, it was a condition that we put on the, on our approval. So we basically requested the twenty-five thousand dollars for the betterment of the town, um, for field improvements. That's it. So if we didn't ask for it, it wouldn't be there.
Right.
Right, so, uh, and then we made sure that we set it aside, so it was for, uh, field improvements, not them mowing lawns and fertilizing and stuff. So, and you know, the first persons that came for it, uh, you know, asking for it, um, so, um, what would the board feel, I mean, I?
So I think that, that I, I would get, I would advise you to get, let's get on the selectmen's agenda and let's get that other money assured. Maybe if we come back with that, that other funding of, of maybe seventy-five thousand dollars, this board may look at and say, okay, we'll give you your blessings and, and they'll have that time. Because that still has to be approved through them. So I know they have a meeting on the twenty-seventh or February fourth, I think, is that, no? I know it's the twenty-seventh, and then, um, I don't know if we can get on that, but maybe we can check with Karen tomorrow. And, and by that time, I'll have the, uh, the finance director assure the amount of money, that, that, that it's there. I mean, I know it's there, but, um, she has to sign off that it's there.
Yeah, so, for the purpose of this meeting, the twenty-five thousand, we, we've broken this up, um, by design here, so it's kinda à la carte. So if we, if we, wherever the need is greatest here, um, our, our goal obviously is to have three playable fields that will benefit two programs, uh, including the high school. So, I'm in construction as well, I'm a supervisor, and if I don't ask the question where the deadline is,
Oh, yeah.
I won't get an answer, so.
Perfect.
The same thing, you know?
No, and like I said, I, I, you know, it, it's probably within our right to go ahead and just say, sure, go ahead. I just would hate to have someone say, hey, gee whiz, you know, we needed this thing, and you guys had it and you didn't even ask us, and, um, you know, that, that's the only thing I would be, you know.
Certainly, I'm not looking for a decision tonight, but I'm just looking for a potential end date here.
I mean, personally, I'm, I'm not opposed. I think it's a perfect use for the, for the, uh, for the, the funds. I think that's, you know, one of the reasons we put it in, when Brutus was here, he, you know, was smart enough to put the restriction on it. So it is for, you know, fixings up stuff that's broken. Um, so, uh, anyone else have any thoughts on?
Yeah.
I was just gonna bring up a, a new date, but, um, as well, I, obviously I'm not as familiar with areas outside of, um, right around here. Are there any fields that we could even contemplate needing serious upgrade for recreational purposes?
All of them.
Like every single?
Every field we have, and we don't have enough to accommodate the kids that we have.
Yeah, okay.
But, but the decision specifically states it's for this field.
It's for this field, okay.
It's for the town.
From the Glenn, Glenn Allen, okay.
Because the Oak Grove Field is, that's privately under trust. And then the high school fields are owned by the school.
Right. Makes sense.
So, this money would be.
So who, who we need to run this by if we're just?
Well, it's.
No, sorry, not in terms of, um, funding, but in terms of other groups, recreational groups?
It's really a matter of, uh, flag football
Alright.
And soccer. I mean, those are the only, is it, there's nobody else, is there?
No.
So, it's flag football and soccer, and I.
Would construction work and grading positively impact the use of the field for soccer and flag football as well?
Well, I think that the grading and, that would be a something, that would be a separate issue, that would, wouldn't be available till after July first anyways, if they went to the CPC for that, it wouldn't be.
Just food for thought.
Yeah. No, and the, and the soccer, I mean, the youth soccer does use the field as practice, 'cause that's.
Right, I've seen, I see them.
Yeah, all the time, right.
But yeah, if we're benefiting, and clearly, it's used primarily for the purpose of baseball and softball, and I know that soccer uses it as well. I just was trying to see if perhaps by benefiting one group, we end up benefiting the majority, because it's focused on that one area.
Well, I mean, you know, technically, I mean, it does. I mean, they, they actually play the soccer out there.
Right, and they're on the field.
And it, flag football is right in there.
Flag football.
So it's Sisto Field, is, that's one of the.
Yeah.
Right, flag football will have four, three or four games on that field at one time.
Yep.
There's three, three games go on up there at every hour.
And Sisto Two, Four.
Yep. And then, so it's, um, and I, as the mother of a soccer and flag football player, I can tell you the injuries my son has obtained
Yeah.
from out there.
Now, look, I take my dog out to run there all the time, and I embarrass myself on a number of occasions.
Yep, that's why I walk my dog out there, so that nobody sees me fall on my face.
So when would, if we did a, really, yeah.
We'll get to set a February meeting date, um, the month, and today will be February eleventh, Tuesday, February eleventh.
Okay. Well, I mean, the, I mean, the other option is we could, I mean, we did kinda walk through it, and we've, you know, we are benefiting, it seems like the majority of the, the sports, and we could, it is funding that we are in the control under.
So can I ask a stupid question, being that I am not a contractor or DPW or, um, I'm just a stupid attorney?
Yes.
As part of all of this, the central portion of the field, um, is that going to be, is anything gonna happen out there in the middle? Or is this all for the, the diamonds?
It's just for the diamonds.
Okay.
So the sense that, that, that the middle of the field, it needs to be done, that, that we, we've contracted the, the person who's been, and we, we'll, in early spring, slice seed it and try to get it to, for the growth to come back in the middle of the field. But that has nothing to do with playing on it or, or anything else like that.
And, because that's all uneven as well, but that's, that's just a matter of, just because it's.
It's just because it's, it's, it's the overuse of, of, of the high school using the field way, way, way too much.
Okay.
And not being, having the ability to rotate the
And rest it.
The, the, the soccer field.
Yeah, I mean, as soon as one sport's off it, there's another on it, and the only time it has time to rest is the summertime, and then it burns out, so.
And not even this year, we, there was no, there was no rest on it at all this year. There was soccer being, that soccer's been, was used on that field right through summer, every day.
Yeah, and flag football starts end of August, early June, first September.
Well, I mean, I mean, we could just skip the notification and vote on it now.
They wanted to see if they could rest the funding.
So it would, it would be, it would be pending, you know, securing the rest of the funding. I mean, you just wouldn't give the twenty-five thousand, it would be securing the rest of it.
So notifying soccer and flag football would basically be saying, would this money
It'd have to use.
Go towards, towards the center of the field or towards the diamonds? And, so that's, that's the question. And of course, presumably, again, not being on either board, they're gonna say, yeah, if you wanna give us money to go in and do some work on that, but they haven't done any, assuming they haven't done anything, they haven't presented. So that's, now you're gonna be two or three steps, I assume, there's, there's a couple of, there'd be a couple of months for them.
Could, um, then going back to that center, could the CPC, that's a town, that's a town park.
Right.
So we could, they could, at the same time, um, somebody could say, hey, listen, we'd like to, you know, bring some lumen, flatten out the center of the town field. And, you know, I think if they overlaid it with some, you know, and, you know, slice seed it, you'd, you know, try to flatten out some of the lumps.
Yeah, I, I, I just don't know where the funding for that would come, because there's, there's not enough funding in the DPW budget to pay for that. I, I know that, um, the recreation department has approached us on looking to go to the CPC in July. Well, for a town meeting vote of a July for a spending, expenditures, so that wouldn't happen until, and that would be when the season's done. And when something like that type of work, because that's what, towards the end of it, they're all done, you know, softball, you know, and, and we'd have to shut the field down.
Right.
When that would be done, uh, would it be in time to open up for flag football in, even soccer? I don't know. I don't, uh.
So even if we, even if we got it, we might not have the ability to do it, 'cause we'd have to shut down
Have to move, right?
Off to somewhere else anyhow.
Yep.
And the reality is, you can flip a coin as to which field you're gonna start. Do you start in the middle for one sport, or do you start on the four corners for another sport? You know, do you divide it up and give it fifty-fifty, and then basically, nobody has enough money to really accomplish much? You know, there, the, other than going in, put, slapping on a few more Band-Aids that we've already done. You know, there is the thought that if you approach other
They're gonna say, yes, sure. They're going to say, yes, sure.
And you say, hey, we've got this money, would you be interested in it?
Yeah.
Of course, they're going to, you know, I mean, I, I can't imagine any team saying no, but then, if you've got softball and baseball that has a proposal that is, you know, here on the table, and you're saying to soccer and/or football, okay, do something, you're putting this off by another year, realistically.
And actually, it, it, it's the Board of Selectmen, it, the town field is operated, they're the Public Works Commissioners, they're the parks commissioners. It's not softball, it's not soccer, it's not flag football, that the money's being offered to do it. It's, it's the money's being offered to maintain the field, you know, the, the town field, that, and which is owned by all us residents. It's not owned by the Millis youth soccer, Millis flag football, or anything else. It's, 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 it's a town field, and the proposal came to the town, it was, it was presented to the DPW, um, we met, and, and, and the Recreation Department were also involved in there, we met with, uh, I believe, almost all the chairs of all the boards. Remember that we met two years ago when we started this discussion? Uh, so this is a culmination of, of, of where, where are we now, and, and this was the first proposal that, that had come, and to secure, to start the securing of the funding, this twenty-five thousand dollars has to be secured, along with what the, the, the selectmen, you know, ultimately, um, you know, we have the right to say, yes, you know, we think this is a worthy project, and then the selectmen have to give the other seventy-five thou- you know, approve the other, not give, approve the other seventy-five thousand.
All right, so what you're saying is that the other, other boards had been made aware of it previous to that?
I believe so, yeah.
I think so.
I-
Well, flag football's been made, made aware of it, and flag football on the board was the old DPW director that set up the restrictions, so he's known about it forever, too.
Okay.
And I don't know that you have baseball and softball, you have these gentlemen that have taken the initiative as volunteers?
Well, I'm not, here's the thing-
No, what I'm-
I think fixing the fields is great, don't get me wrong.
No, but what I'm saying is, is that to have reached this point and now say, okay, we're going to put the brakes on you for a couple of months, because you've done all of this work, to say, now, we're going to go open it up to everybody else and say, hey, who else want, there, as, as is discussed about, well, I didn't hear there was a marijuana place going in, I didn't hear the town meeting was being moved, there's only so much notification you can do when, and, as a town group, and you got to, people have to start taking initiatives.
Okay, no, I get it.
So, the fact that these gentlemen have done this at, on their ti- on their dime, on their personal time-
Supposed to you, who's doing it for fifty bucks a year.
Excuse me, fifty dollars, twice a year?
Twice a year.
We make the big bucks at this table.
Um, okay, well, no, I, that's fine, so if we could, we could do it where we do, uh, we, we approve the fund, approve the funding pending-
Pending approval.
The remainder of the funds being released from the, um, soccer.
Yeah.
And then, we're not holding it up, and, you know, it is discretionary on our part, and it's for the, it's for the town, it's for the fields.
What do you mean, it's discretionary now, if we vote on it?
Correct.
Then it's, we're not, it's no longer discretionary.
No, I understand that, right.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure I understood what you said.
Yeah.
And I think most importantly, Michael had, had broken it down into, so even if, if they don't, for some reason, they don't give that rest of the funding, you know, he can still fix his back, two backstops out of this funding, which, which both of them desperately need. That girl's softball field is a disgrace, and love and mind that, that same is my son played when he was over, it's the same. The overhang, it's just, it's, somebody's going to get hurt there.
Right. Okay, anyone else have any comments? Any comments from the audience?
Let's go, Fuzi for eleven Union Street, thank you to them, to this group, I mean, I do go over and watch the games, I think it's important. Uh, yeah, they're, they're, they, they, they need some work, the fields are tired, and, and we have to start investing in it, uh, not only for safety reasons, but, uh, brings back to discussion a few years ago that we need to improve our fields in town, uh, we have great sports in town, and we have to start looking as a town to start investing in them, uh, like we have in our, in our, in our public buildings, because, uh, we have great teams, and we have to start, and, and it takes a strain off of Jim's staff, who goes out there tirelessly and does their job, too, as well, so I think it's important, and it's good use of the money, so, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. All right, um, all right, I make a motion that we, um, we release the twenty-five thousand dollars to, um, the field, field improvements, uh, pending the, uh, you know, well, how do we want to do that, actually? Let me go, let me withdraw that. How would we want to do that, Jim, so?
So, I, I would say that I, I would secure the funding towards the, um, project outlined by the Millis Girl Softball League, and, um, and with the, or like, you, you were just going to finish it with the, with, with the rest of the funding being secured through, um, the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. All right, that makes sense, yeah.
So, we're not making it contingent upon-
Well, that's what I'm saying, I want to make sure that it's not, so we would, we're just, yeah, we, we would release the funding and-
Towards.
Right, towards, and that would be that.
Yep.
Okay, all right, I make a mo- Go ahead, sir.
With the understanding that they'll be seeking the remaining funding through the Board of Soft-
Okay, all right, so I make a motion that we, uh, release-
I got it.
You got it?
Thank God, we have a meal.
Thank God, I was going to repeat it. All right, uh, motions been made?
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your work.
Thank you for the opportunity to get up here.
Great, thank you.
Baseball and softball's off in the spring, so, right?
Yeah. After the last day, I do, I'm going to know.
All right. All right, and we have the-
It's just deliberation and-
Yeah, okay.
And we have two draft decision, well, one draft decision for the subdivision, and one is a letter for the scenic road application. You've already closed the plan, it's just consideration of the two applications.
Right, all right, so this, um, this is for the Causeway Street subdivision, so they had a couple of cleanup items that they had sent out, um, basically on the wall, uh, to make sure that it was, um, to match the existing, using the existing, uh, um, um, stones, and, um, what else? When I actually, yeah, so you should go through, Melissa added, I think, one thing in the decision, and then I added a couple of items that, um, uh, on Causeway Street, um, one of the items was that, uh, you know, Causeway Street does have a lot of traffic, and, uh, didn't want to have the road, uh, you know, shut down to one lane, uh, because it is a cut-through street, um, so that you couldn't block it, and if you did, you'd have to get a detail officer. Uh, the other one was, we had, uh, the neighbors brought up a concern about the, about the dust, and that we made a note that that is a concern, and that, uh, you know, all reasonable measure, measures should be used to control the dust as a condition. Um, and I think that was it. And what did you add in there, Melissa?
Um, I just had highlighted on condition number thirty and thirty-one, based on some discussions and things that have come up on some recent, um, subdivisions. Number thirty, number thirty, I put in there because of over at Hickory Hills, where, you know, we had the issues with the trees that hadn't gone in, and there was owners, and then the owners who didn't want trees, and, so, that's where number thirty is coming from. The roadway and its associated infrastructure and pertinences, including but not limited to stormwater facilities, street trees, sidewalks, et cetera, shall be substantially complete and operational before any occupancy permits are issued for the individual lots. Um, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that wording, but that-
No, that was fun. I looked at, I mean, I looked at that, and that, because I think when Hickory Hills did it, they wanted it, they didn't want it, they wanted it that, that way, because it would make that, so they could sell it. It was the, when the street was approved, not when the, and then, uh, go ahead, there was another.
And thirty-one, so, as-built plans, this is another thing that has kind of come up before, I think, as far as when the as-built plans come in. Um, should they be submitted for approval to the Planning Board prior to a request for street acceptance? Um, or, I guess, the timing of the as-built plan.
Right.
I think that's the right thing to say.
No, that's, yeah, we, yeah.
Right, yeah. And then I just added thirty-eight, which might have been taken care of with the note update.
Yeah, he-
But I don't know if you want to, if you want to nix thirty-eight, or keep it, it doesn't hurt anything.
No, we believe in it. Yeah, that's fine, it doesn't hurt.
What does thirty-eight actually say?
Yeah, was it, basically, you updated the plan, but it's the same thing.
Yeah, it says, the stone wall to be removed and rebuilt at the entrance to Causeway Street shall be constructed in exactly the same manner as the existing wall by methods of dry stacking to the board's satisfaction.
Yeah, that is pretty much exactly what the new name is.
Yeah, so, I know, right. This, just so you know, this is a closed hearing.
Okay.
I know you're interested in crap, but, uh-
Okay.
Basically, it's that we're done with the, the discussion, so, thank you for answering the question, I appreciate it.
[laughing]
And then there was one other thing, um, on the, um, infiltrator system, uh, for the roofs, that, that they should be, um, upon, uh, they should be checked prior to sale, like a septic, just to make sure they're working. And that was it. All right, so-
I just have one question.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I wasn't at the last meeting, so, um, is this going to be a private way, or is it going to be a town-accepted way? Melissa?
I think the-
Because I, number thirty-six, it says, prior to start of construction of the private roadway, the applicant or the subsequent owner of the subdivision shall meet with the, I thought this was going to be, going to be put forth for acceptance.
I think it is supposed to be for acceptance, so private, private construction of the, we just say roadway, private construction of the roadway.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good catch.
All right, anyone else have any comments? On the board?
Just a quick one, um, thirty-one, this is wholly arbitrary, but is there any need to amend, um, just the sentence that ends with a question? Just for purposes of submission?
Yeah, should be a period.
I'll change, I'll change that.
Just, just, yeah.
Nobody circled that.
All right.
It's staying as, as is, it's just going to be a period?
Yeah, just to make sure that it's, it's a condition that need, that will be satisfying and met.
All right, uh, there's no other comments from the board, um, I make a motion that we, uh, approve, okay, we approve the, uh, definitive plan submitted by Stephen Silver, two-twenty-seven Causeway Street, for a proposed three-lot residential definitive subdivision on Causeway Street, Millis, Mass., Assessor's Parcel fifteen dash fifty-five.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. All right, and the second thing was the scenic road application, which was, um, to allow them to take the wall down and put it back up, um, and so we've already gone through that. Um, so I make a motion that we, uh, approve the, uh, application of Stephen Silver, two-twenty-seven Causeway Street, Millis, Mass., uh, requesting consent for the Planning Board pursuant to the scenic road rules and regulations for the town of Millis for relocation of existing stone wall along Causeway Street, Assessor's Parcel fifteen dash fifty-five.
Second.
All right, motion's been made, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have to sign, we have to sign, but-
Yep.
You can give them to Camille, though, if you want to leave a couple of new ones.
Thank you. And if you would like to-
Do you have them, Camille?
I'm sorry?
Those are new plans.
Oh, ah, yes, I have the new plans, right?
Okay.
We have, yes.
Mm-hmm.
I have the new plans, yeah. Um, if you want to deliver, right, in both on the Crown Castle, you can take care of that one as well.
Okay, yep.
Just very little special, um, no.
Yeah, yeah.
You have the public hearing.
Yep, yeah, yeah. And then my fingers-
And then you can sign that one as well.
Yep. All right, um, I make a motion that we, uh, approve the special permit for the renewal, uh, sorry, approve a renewal of special permit and special permit modification under section twelve Q and thirteen N of the zoning bylaws of the town of Millis for existing personal wire, wireless communications facility located, located at ten seventy-three Main Street, map twenty-two, parcel ten, Millis, Mass., property owned by Malavich LLC.
Seconded.
All right, uh, motions been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Okay.
All right, and now-
We have Nicole Hoover thing, and then we can decide.
Yep. And so, next on the agenda would be, um, Ms. Riley, going through the housing production plan for the, uh, town of Mills.
So, as you all know, we've seen multiple copies of the housing production plan, um, the, it has finally been approved by Planning Board, Board of Selectmen, and it's been sent off to the, um, Attorney General's Office for approval. So, the Economic Development Director has requested, would like to know where this stands as far as the, um, the goals and the accompanying strategies that are in the plan, where this all stands with the Board of, of, with the Planning Board. So, what I sent to you was just, instead of, I know you all have copies of the ninety-page report, um, I sent you the, just the goals section, which was about seven pages. Now, to be honest, I think at least, I think the majority of these goals do not necessarily apply to the Planning Board. Um, uh, Camille has given you a, the, um, a packet that says Millis HPP goals with an email from me. Uh, on the first page, you'll see, it does break, it does list all the goals, so I'll just, um, create the opportunity to develop a more diverse housing stock, that's really something that I believe is going to fall under, um, the, uh, Board of Selectmen, in particular, the recommendation is for the establishment of a committee to advocate for housing policies, um, and so, things with, under that would fall under this new HPP committee if the, uh, Board of Selectmen so chooses, as well, establishing a municipal affording. Housing Trust Fund provides seniors and the disabled with greater housing options. Um, the only item under this goal, number one, would, that Planning Board could possibly become involved in is encourage retrofits and conversions of existing housing stock to support and assist seniors, um, to house in place. So, that's one of the things that the Director and the EDC would be looking to, see how, um, the Planning Board would be able to encourage this sort of retrofit and conversions. My initial response was, I think that kind of, I don't know, I don't know, that goes towards more, uh, the building regulations, um, with regards to conversions, um, so, but that's one thing for us to consider. Most importantly, really, would be goal number three, as far as the Planning Board is concerned. Review and revise the zoning bylaws to remove barriers and create more incentives towards the production of affordable housing. The strategies that the housing production plan puts forth is, to achieve this, is to identify barriers to establishing mixed-use developments and multifamily residential developments, considering that on our bylaws right now, multifamily dwellings are not allowed by right, they are by special permit. Um, the, our height restrictions of two and a half stories can serve as a disincentive if you're trying to establish multifamily dwellings, um, and there is, the town does And there is, the town does have a limitation on the number of three-bedroom apartments that can be in town. So those are things that they've, that the, the HPP has, considers to be barriers towards multifamily senior housing. They're looking for us to, again, review, consider inclusionary zoning that requires a percent of units be deed-restricted as affordable, such as in a forty-B development. Reduce the minimum parking requirements for two-plus bedroom units for multifamily development, residential developments. Consider changes. Consider allowing affordable housing on pre-qualified, pre-existing non-conforming lots. We do have some, just outside the downtown area, there are some lots that, old lots that are, as they stand now, are pre-existing non-conforming, and they have much older homes on them. I know one, one property owner in particular who has this exact circumstance would like to put in multifamily, but because of the way, because the zones have changed over the years, he doesn't have frontage to do anything other than leave the house that's there now. So that's something else that we can discuss, look into if we, you know, make the decision, is that something we would, we feel is worth looking into, would be beneficial for the town? Consider provisions for cottage-style housing, which I believe is similar in this report that you've sent out.
Well, yeah, so I printed this, so you guys can grab it. I can, Camille can send it to, but I'm not trying to steal your thunder.
No, 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 please.
One of the trade magazines that I had, actually had in Oregon, they're doing stuff where they're doing smaller cottages, and they have a central open space that they all go up against, and they also have some other ideas in like the smaller, the smaller lots, narrow lots. And it's just, it's some things that we, you know, should look at to see if we can make more, you know, make, you make more use of the land and also more affordable, so, which I can, actually had Camille print it, so if you guys wanted to take a peek at it, it had some good stuff in it.
So there are, as I said, a lot of this doesn't necessarily fall under planning board. But the review and, and potential revision of the zoning bylaws obviously is something that best comes from this board. Now, my first question, before dragging, spending too much time on this, is, is this something that this board feels we should work on as a board? Or would, would we be more interested in recommending to the Board of Selectmen the development of a subcommittee? I don't, from, I spoke with the Assistant Town Clerk, and she had said that we have the ability to request, to recommend a subcommittee. We don't, we can't just form a committee on our own. Now, that does have its pluses and minuses, since we have, this board has so much else in front of us to try to be going through rewriting.
Or we could, we could also pick away, you know, we could pick a couple of items and, and work on, you know, achievable goals would be.
Since it's so easy to get people to join committees.
Right.
But that's just, that's an option that I just wanted to.
No, it's not, yeah, not a bad idea.
To see how.
Yeah, we could, we could, we could pick, we could pick a, you know, a target, you know, we could try to work on a target. We did the solar thing at one point in time, and, you know, we could try to do, you know, pick a couple of items that we thought would be, because we'd also have to go through town, we'd have to go through town meeting.
Right.
Because to make a change in the zoning.
Right. But it really, the first step is sitting down and going through the bylaws as they exist now.
What if we set a, on our, on our agenda, why don't we set, the first thing that we do is each time is go through one thing, make it number one. So, yeah, at seven-thirty, we do, you know, we work on one zoning item for a meeting for.
Do we want to do that first and have?
Everyone wait?
Backing up everybody?
Yeah, because that'll get it, that'll, that will get the conversation through quickly.
Okay.
I'm just, it's a thought. Like I said, while we're fresh, because what happens normally is that our, you know, our, you know, seven-fifty, you know, item on the agenda, we end up going to that at ten, and obviously at ten, we'd probably push that off till,
Till following meeting.
Till the following meeting. I'm just thinking aloud. You know, and we're not gonna hit it out of the park and, you know, we did the chicken thing and it took us, what, over a year?
Oh, good. We're still working on it, aren't we? We're still reviving that.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yep.
Would town council be involved in undertaking this and presenting zoning changes? Or is that something the planning board?
No, well, I mean, if we, like when we made the change for the chickens, we would, we went ahead and made the.
That was a general bylaw.
Yeah.
So we're talking about, are we talking about alterations to the zoning map?
Correct.
Yeah.
Not necessar, well, not necessar, possibly the zoning map.
So when, when was the last time the master plan was updated, future?
They actually, I had a conversation with Bob Weiss about that, and they're looking into getting that revised next.
That was a while, like twenty years ago.
Yeah, that's, I just want to make sure, because I thought.
But, I mean, we could, say, for example, we could, we could pick, you know, we could choose, okay, multifamily dwellings are not allowed by right. There's one item.
Okay.
And, and look through and determine, is that something, and how could we, it's not, you know, we may need to go through.
Probably change the use table.
But also, it's like, you know, we can check with other local areas, see how that's, how it's addressed. But yes, if it's gonna be rewritten, we can make proposals, but town council need.
Right, town meeting, it'd have to be approved.
Right.
Right, but it's more, yeah.
Well, myself personally, I think the easiest thing to go is, is to go for low-line fruit, and odd lots would be something that, you know, I would feel, you know, narrow lot, okay, let's, you know, you have a, you know, twenty-five-foot wide lot, okay, let's see if we can, you know, build a house on it. I mean, that's.
Makes certain exceptions.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, it would be, you know, it would be not a by right, but it would be a special permit that we could, we could do. But I'd have, I mean, there's, there's over on Pleasant Street, do they still have those lots over there? There's like, there's like twenty weird lots that are over there that no one's been able to do anything on. Of course, they need septic, right?
They would need septic.
Yeah, so that'd make it a little tougher.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, that would be something that, you know, that would be, that would be a low-line fruit to go at.
Yeah, there's, um, one of those, one of the lots up, like behind Acorn, they were.
That's it, that's, he's talking about the same, it's the same one.
Okay.
I forget what they gave away at the movie theater or something.
Yeah, right.
And some, some people have bought bunches of them, and so they can combine. There's a lot up there. That's when the, the housing, remember the lady wanted to build a house up there came?
Right.
From, um.
Yeah, and there's issues with, there are lots in there that don't have right-of-way to a road.
And there's no frontage, back, you know, side.
All right, so I, I mean, personally, I would say, yes, I'm interested in doing something to increase our, and, and make some changes if it would help. I think the, you know, and, and on the affordable side is that the, you know, so we're not looking to build, you know, the normal, like Acorn up on Hickory Hills and that, that's, you know, we're looking more to go towards a, the ability to build a smaller, more affordable house.
Okay. So I will report back to the director and to the committee meets Thursday, Economic Development Committee, that the planning board will be, is gonna begin, you know, one item at a time, reviewing, seeing what, you know, how we stand up to the surrounding towns, what possibilities we could, you know, and, and open discussions for that.
And can they, and like you said, I mean, one of the things, like when I did the solar, I went and looked up three different towns, I grabbed their bylaws, I pulled pieces out of them.
Right.
Just like you do with the seniors.
Right.
You did that out.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, we take a look at what's around, see what works, and let's talk about it, and we can make it our bylaw, so.
Now, I know, now, the other issue was that the, they are hoping to do a town-wide initiative. I don't have any specifics as to what that will constitute, but the, they're just, the director is just getting started and trying to talk to committees and departments and getting people on board, and would like to know that as they progress, would this board be interested in being part of that town-wide initiative?
Initiative for?
Implementing the, this whole housing production plan. You know, and, and all of the goals, obviously, you know, there are certain things that we could say, oh, yeah, we're, we're all in favor of. It's not in our jurisdiction, but just to know that the planning board isn't, is the planning board saying, yeah, you want to do this, go ahead, you know?
No, I think we, we need to be.
We will be, you know, actively involved. As I said, it's, I don't have any specifics to say, yes, next month they're going to meet. They're just starting. It was, Bob was referring to the, when we did the, you know, scenic areas, open space, that sort of thing. So he is gonna try to actively get multiple boards, but, so, you know, because I asked him, I said, well, I don't, I don't know that anybody's going to commit to something when we don't have a specific. But, you know, just being able to say yes, yes or no, we will be working.
I would say in general, I think, and, you know, Jim can agree, and I think we all can agree, that, you know, we haven't done any updating on our zoning, and, you know, a lot of the stuff that's out there now is, you know, we have to, the, you know, the single-family resident on acre and a half has limited the, you know, limited the middle is what they call it. And the other thing is, you know, for some of these incentives like the forty-B, that isn't always necessarily the greatest to really getting affordable housing, because they only have to send a percentage. So they go in, they can do, you know, they get exceptions from the rules, they can stuff in a bunch of houses, and then they can say, oh, well, we can do ten percent. It would be nicer if we could have it zone so that the ability for people to come in and build smaller houses and sell them and make them really affordable, and not ten percent of them would be. And like you said, the cottage style was another one, where they, they're building small houses. I mean, that's, you know, you build a small house, you can afford it. So that would be something that I think we should look at.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna report back to them on Thursday's meeting, and we can, yeah, we can start with.
Is that another committee we wrote? You went to representing us.
Yes, you did. We can start with the, looking further into the pre-existing non-conforming lots, you know, dimensional requirements.
I think that'd be, that'd be good.
Okay.
All right, great. The next thing we have is approve of the minutes. I read them, and as usual, they were fantastic. I make a motion that we approve the minutes from December seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Well, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and then we need to schedule a meeting for.
No, you were here for like the last ten minutes.
That's.
Okay.
In favor?
He's in favor for the approval of last, the prior month's minutes.
All right.
The second Tuesday is February eleventh. If you want to go with that date.
Yeah, because the, the following is February break.
Right, that's President's.
Okay, so it would be the eleventh, you said?
Yeah.
Yep, does February eleventh work for everyone?
It does, we have to confirm that against the master calendar.
Well, I've already, I'll put it right up there tomorrow, but in my opinion, planning, anybody that does special hearings and special permits should kind of.
Special.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
No, that, that's.
That scheduling is, you know.
Kidoki.
Permits and public hearings and such. And can we do March as well?
Sure.
Because I will be gone for a week in March, so I'd like to, if possible, propose March tenth.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll just put in the last one. One second, sorry.
So February eleventh and March tenth, if that works for all.
February, March tenth. All right. Sure.
Nicole, which week is vacation week in April?
Um, the seventeenth. It is the seventeenth to the twenty-first.
Of April?
Oh, of April?
Yes, April vacation.
Sorry, hold on, let me.
Thirteenth or the week of the.
That is the twentieth to the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Yep, so that's, yeah.
All right, so we'll go with those two dates for now. That might be great.
So just a quick update, I believe everybody knows that Stax opened finally.
Yeah.
I know.
It's soft open.
It's soft opening. They'll be open full-time starting Monday. And the Isabelas, I forget, I don't know what the new name of it's gonna be.
Yeah, the deli they're setting up.
Yep, they're gonna be open on February fourth. Gas station, I mean, it's moving along. It's not as big as I thought it was gonna be. Well, they haven't got the top up there yet, but long skinny building, I think we've all seen it.
How's, how's the Orchard Street paving project going?
So the Orchard Street paving project will be done in, in, they're gonna actually do the potholes tomorrow.
Oh.
Seriously.
Put new ones in, or?
I mean, they're gonna fill in what, what was there. I mean, what slowed that project down, there's a leak in the three-inch force main that's there for the services of the houses, so I wouldn't accept it. Until, and I told them, you're not gonna stop digging everything up to find it until the spring. And, and they agreed upon that. The sewer is live.
I was gonna say, is the pump station?
Yeah, the pump stations, finally, they're pumping to the Charles River Pollution District. And they're selling on like, I think there's like fourteen, no, there's more than that. I think there's like almost upwards of twenty people.
Yeah, they were out the warm day on Saturday, a whole group of them. It's like, because now it's like Grove Street's the walking path, so.
They love coming down to the Millistown Hall and introducing them all themselves to us.
These twenty units that are occupied?
Yes.
Wow.
And what, and the paving is gonna be done once they fix the leak and, because they're not, they're not held to.
Gas is done. Gas is all in.
But they're not held, it's not like you had to wait for the funds to be released for, to do our paving, so that'll be, so will be like, when the plant's open, they're gonna get it done?
Yeah, they, they want to get in, they want to get out of there, they, you know, with that aspect of the, of the project. Yeah.
No, when they, also, one other question. So when they, they did the base coat, so it settled in areas, or they?
They'll, they'll, they'll level it. Yep, they'll come back and level it, and, and, I mean, our engineering firm will be in control of what's being done there, not theirs. They did a good job on Exchange Street, you know, the sewer trench. That's something that, you know, the town's gonna have to look at, we'll look, you know, the Selectmen will look at. We're gonna mill that and pave it or just leave it, because it's not as bad as, it's better than what was there on the lower end of Exchange Street.
Well, actually having it, having it sit, although they're gonna dig it up again.
No, they're all done.
No, no, I'm just saying, on, on, yeah, on Orchard, if they let it, like you done, and let it sit over the winter to go through a season, but now they're gonna dig it up again, so.
Well, they, they have a good idea. We have a good idea where it is, so we can isolate the, the sections and do a pressure test.
Right.
So we, we'll, we'll do it that way. What was the, was I gonna say one more thing? The gas is also live. So they're, they're finally taking the propane tanks out, and they're installing gas services to all the homes that are there, which is, that's another big. I drove up there, I usually drive up on Sunday nights to take a look and see, I mean, it, it's amazing, the entrance of it. Some people don't like it, some people like it. It's, it's there, but it's, it's starting to pay off. There was much discussion last night at the Selectmen's meeting. I, I think that their sales are far exceeding what, what was ever expected. I think we did a good job with, with our aspect of making sure that the town was well-protected on that project, and and I think they, they must know too, because they, you know, they're, they're selling homes, like, on a record pace. They can't believe how, while they're selling those homes. And also Mr. Fox's project, his for, over fifty-five development, I believe he's got upwards of twelve sold out of the first twenty-two that he's built. I mean, that's, so over fifty-five is good. No children, no, no school-aged children, so.
All right, great. All right, I make a motion that we adjourn. All right, motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you.
There's things to sign, I'll lay out on the table.
All right, we're all set, thank you.
Two bills, and then the two decisions. Josh, this decision with the subdivision, you don't have to sign.
What am I, what?
Yep.